Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody, including our special guest, the High Plains kindergarten class and their families. We are convened as the Loveland City Council regular meeting. We start off our meetings with the pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
And we are going to ask our kindergarteners to lead the way. So if you would come to this table where there are microphones, we want you to lead the pledge tonight.
I can, we'll go at the same one.
Wait, do I have to press this button?
You start when you're ready.
I'll start when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Caitlin. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job. Next, roll call. Dylan, if we could please have roll call.
Marsh.
Here.
Overcash.
Here.
McFaul.
Here.
Ball.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
Fogle.
Here.
Malo.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
Madam Mayor, there are nine members present.
Thank you. And let me ask, Counselor Fogle, you're normally our motion reader. Since you're on Zoom, do you want to do that? Or would you like me to select somebody else to do the motion reading?
Why don't you let Counselor Foley do it? He's good at it.
Okay, all right. I guess it is going to be you. All right, thank you. Don't take backs. All right. Children, don't listen to this. All right, proclamation, Meals on Wheels. Jeffrey Pamranka and Carrie Kaufman are going to be the recipients of the proclamation, and Counselor Ball is going to read the proclamation.
Whereas the city of Loveland recognizes the importance of nourishing and enriching the lives of homebound individuals with nutritious meals and daily contact by caring volunteers. And whereas the aging population in Colorado is increasing each year with 20.7% of the total population over the age of 60, and as our population continues to age, needs increase as well. And whereas Colorado ranks 17th in the U.S. for older adults who are threatened by an experienced food insecurity, and third in the U.S. for older adults at risk of social isolation. And whereas in 2022, Meals on Wheels of Loveland Berthod served 661 clients, conducted 63,457 client visits, providing 74,002 meals. And whereas Meals on Wheels of Loveland Berthod's 321 volunteers help package and deliver nutritious meals as well as providing daily contact for our homebound population, helping those in need to maintain independence and premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels of Loveland Berthod has been serving our communities for 55 years. And whereas to continue feeding those in need, Meals on Wheels of Loveland Berthod will commence a year-long celebration to share our story of impact and purpose with our community and to further expand our reach. Now therefore, we, the City Council of Loveland, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as Meals on Wheels of Loveland Berthod Month, and January 17, 2023, as Meals on Wheels of Loveland Berthod 55th anniversary kickoff. In the city of Loveland, Colorado, and ask the citizens of this community to help raise awareness about the importance of providing nutritious meals and daily contact for our homebound citizens. Signed the 17th day of January 2023, Mayor Jackie Marsh.
Counselor Olson, you are a photographer.
We're going to take a photo of you first, and then we'll ask you to say a few words.
If I can just take a couple of minutes to say, and it won't even be a couple of minutes, just say thank you to the City Council and everyone in the city of Loveland. Meals on Wheels really is the best expression of community involvement there is. We at Meals on Wheels of Loveland Berthod are celebrating 55 years, the oldest Meals on Wheels in Colorado, and in fact, the oldest west of the Mississippi. So we'll tell you all about it, all the details you ever want to know, if you will come to our open house, which is next Thursday, right over at Meals on Wheels. It's on the corner of Garfield and Fifth. It is 3:30 to 7:30. Just an open house. Come in, spend five minutes, spend a couple hours, see what we do, see all the wonderful things that the community has done to help older adults live independent and nourished lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know. I see our reporter Harold is taking that down. All right, great organization. Next, we move on to award presentation from our fire chief, Community Life Safety Award. Oh, we got two. We got Jeff Swante and Chief Tim.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of council. As you notice, I'm kind of a small guy, so I come with an army. Madam Mayor, it's an honor to recognize two individuals from our community for a courageous act. I reserve the right to give a fire chief award for courageous acts and acts that are certainly exceptional. And these two gentlemen, on this particular night, acted with courage and selflessness. So I want to briefly share with you that I have a few people, obviously, with me that I think are deserving of recognition as well. Obviously, I have the LFA chairman Jeff Swante with me. I've got Assistant Chief Greg Ward, Battalion Chief Eric Klass. Whoops, he's out of place, but he was the incident commander for this incident. We have Lieutenant Shelby Vrem and his crew from Engine 45, the first arriving crew that night. And then we also have Becky Kaminski. She's representing Loveland Emergency Communications. We oftentimes talk about it's a team sport. When it comes to emergency services, it is unquestionably a team event. And it all starts with the civilian acting promptly, and then it goes through our communication process, and then obviously, LFA and all our response partners act upon that. So let me describe the incident to you. On November 12 of last year at 1:17 a.m., Loveland Fire Rescue Authority was dispatched to a multifamily apartment fire. Engine 45, led by Lieutenant Vrem, was the first arriving LFA unit on the scene in a reported two-story apartment fire with three-quarters of involvement of the second floor. I'll turn your attention to the screen. Given this initial report, Chief Eric Klass, who was the responding battalion chief, immediately mentally preparing for what would obviously be occupants potentially trapped, given the hour at which this fire occurred. Upon arrival, Engine 45, Lieutenant Vrem continued what we call a 360 size up. He continued to size up the situation. He quickly assessed the scene and identified the fact that there were no occupants trapped. So it certainly de-escalates the incident. After the fire was extinguished, Chief Klass and investigators had the opportunity to assess the extent of the damage, for good reason. Chief Klass and the investigators were absolutely amazed that none of our civilians were hurt, given the situation. This fire had started in an apartment with one way in and one way out. In addition, the location of the fire was in the direct vicinity of the occupants' means of egress, meaning they would have been directly trapped inside the occupancy. During the investigation, it became apparent that the actions of two of our citizens, Mr. Michael Kaufman and Mr. Shawn Campbell, saved the lives of these second-floor occupants. Their situational awareness to the dangers and their selfless actions in alerting and assisting everyone out of the building while simultaneously communicating with 911 dispatchers who were assisting us to get to the scene undoubtedly saved the lives that night. Madam Mayor and members of council, I truly believe as your fire chief, on November 12, 2022, these two gentlemen exemplified the truest form of courage under fire. So if you'll give me a minute, I would like the chairman to recognize them with the fire chief's award.
Thank you, chief. I'm humbled by this opportunity to stand here next to these two heroes. Thank you. The award reads, Fire Chief's Community Life Safety Award, awarded to Shawn Campbell and Michael Kaufman, in recognition of your courageous and lifesaving actions on November 12, 2022, at 4872 Basswood Drive, Loveland, Colorado. Your selfless actions performed under extreme conditions, preventing the severe injury and/or death of another human being. Loveland Fire Rescue Authority and its citizens of Loveland, Colorado, thank you for your remarkable actions the 17th day of January 2023. Congratulations.
A few of you could kind of come around behind and up a step or two. Need more. Need more in a second row. Either I'm going to be in the back of the room. Okay, yeah. Smile and act like you kind of enjoy this stuff. All right, very good.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, gentlemen. Would either of you like to say a few words? Michael or Shawn, do you want to say a few words?
Share what you share with me. Go ahead.
So, long story short, on November, yeah, it would be November 12. So November 12 of 2022, me and Michael arrived at home about 1 o'clock in the morning, and we had stepped inside for 10 minutes, decided to go back outside. And as soon as we got outside, we happened to see flames start coming up, and both of me, me and him, both took action. He looked at me and said, "That apartment's on fire." We took off running and went over there. He was on the phone to dispatch, ended up kicking the door in to get everybody out. And one of the things that me and him both do for a living is we both drive tow trucks. So on a daily basis, that's what we do, is help people. And we help people a lot of times at the worst times of their day. So it's an honor that we both have been recognized, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. We move on to item 1.6, which is a presentation by our High Plains kindergarten safe crossing. And I'm going to let you, you ladies and students, take over at this point. And so council is going to want to watch the screen because they are going to have some slide depth here.
Hi, my name is Caitlin. These are my friends, Lila, Keen, Caitlin, Athen, and Harrigan. We are kindergarten students from High Plains School. Students at High Plains need safely crossing the street to get to school.
We learn about this problem by listening to guest speakers, collecting data from our classrooms, going for a walk in the neighborhood, and doing research. We listened to four presentations from Frances Raven, community member; Zach Chambers, TSD Bond, projects manager; Ben Rader, field engineering supervisor; Lisa Post, safety and security patrol.
We visited 12 classrooms and learned most of the students in High Plains School ride or roll to school. This is a picture from Walk to School Day in October.
Our solution is to ask the city and to paint a crosswalk on Long Pine Lake Drive. We wrote you a letter.
Dear Mayor Marsh and Loveland City Council, hi. We are kids from High Plains School. We need your help. The students need a crosswalk on Long Pine Lake Drive so they can safely get to school. We raised money to help by two crosswalk signs. Can you please help us put up the signs and paint a crosswalk? Thank you for your help from High Plains Kindergarten.
We want to partner with the city to raise money for flashing crosswalk lights and crosswalk signs in our neighborhood.
We used our laser engraver to make ornaments to sell to our families, and we raised over $500. And we use that money to take to the city to put in 10 more crosswalk signs and lights.
We need to talk to the city at a city council meeting and ask if they can help us get a crosswalk for our school. Any questions?
All right, counselors, this is your opportunity. So how many signs do you think you need?
10.
10 signs. Okay, 10 signs.
How many crosswalks?
We need also 10.
10? So are these just going to be metal signs? Are you going to have flashing signs? Do you have any idea what kind of signs you want?
We need flashing signs.
Flashing ones on all the crosswalks?
Yes. Yes.
And how much money did you raise?
$500.
Wow, thanks a lot. That's great. Good job.
Lot of money. Counselor Sampson? So we have a counselor who's, you know, attending remotely.
Yes, hi, students. It's nice of you to join us this evening. Thank you. I wasn't able to come and see you in person, but you did an excellent job. You should be very proud. You use those microphones better than some of our speakers use them, the grownups come to speak. I have a question for you. Where is your school located? Is it over by the Target area?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. And are there any crosswalks there at all now?
There's a few.
A few, but not enough to meet the need?
Yes.
Well, I think it's impressive you recognize the need and that you're doing, you're taking action. Way to go. I'm very impressed. Excellent job.
All right.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask just a quick question to our city manager, or will this come back before us at some point?
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. And thanks to all the kids for making such a persuasive argument for the budget. I need you every year now to come and argue for my budget on an annual basis. I believe, Madam Mayor, if we could, I have the Public Works Department here who's been working with this group, and they may be able to give the council a little bit of an update.
Okay, come on up, Mark.
This is the guy that can make it happen right there. I'll never ever be able to follow anything that cute ever again. I'm going to actually be quiet for once. I wanted to introduce you because I don't know that you've been formally introduced. I'd like to introduce you to the new city engineer, Nicole Hahn. She's been working closely with the school, school district, and I think we have some things to report.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. As Mark mentioned, I'm Nicole Hahn, your new city engineer. And our team has had a few members that have been able to be some of the experts and work with this team along the way. And we're excited that we're going to pick up some of the data collection and do some of our analysis alongside the school and determine which pieces of this we can implement now, and if there are some things we can work on in the future. And we're going to be working alongside the school district in this process as well.
All right, great.
We're very excited. Thank you all so much for the thoughtful presentation.
Is there additional presentation? Because we're at our kind of two prep meetings. Okay, Counselor Foley, do you have?
Do you have a preference on the color?
Yes.
Do you want it fluorescent and glowing, or white, or yellow?
I want it pink. Pink.
You stepped right in that one direction.
I love the green.
I did ask the question, didn't I?
You did.
I love the green. I want the green too. I want the orange!
All right. Do you want to introduce yourself? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Sampson, I didn't realize you had more questions.
That's all right. I just, I was wondering, and thank you, Nicole, welcome. I've heard great things about you and the work you've done already and what you did in Fort Collins, and really, we're very lucky to have you. Quick question, if I could, though. Are we also working with the Metro District out in that area, considering this could be considered public improvement potentially?
Mark or Nicole?
Yes. Yes.
We haven't reached out to them yet, but we will bring them into the circle as well.
Excellent. Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you. All right, thank you again.
All right, your turn. Let us have your name.
Okay. I really don't need to add anything to their presentation. They did such a great job, and all of us parents here are really proud of our little kindergarteners. I am a parent. My name is Frances Raven, and I am Caitlin's mom. And we have lived in the Lakes of Centerra since 2016, and our oldest child started at High Plains in 2017. We really love our neighborhood feel of our school. Like they said, all the kids walk to school, they ride to school. Most of the kids live really close to our school. So there's always lots of kids playing outside, and all the kids really know each other. And so it's a really wonderful feeling. And I volunteer in Ms. Mayberry's kindergarten class during the week, and so I was really excited to offer a community perspective for the kindergarten PBL. So our community has grown quite a bit since High Plains opened in 2016. There were no houses north of Long Pine Lake Drive, which is the street the kids were talking about. Boyd Lake Avenue was not divided, and there were no homes along Pristine Lake Drive, which are the streets that border our school. Since 2016, when our school opened, the number of houses has greatly increased, our student population has greatly increased, and that has led to some boundary changes to kind of tighten our boundary for our school. And now we're getting a really wonderful school expansion to accommodate all that growth. So in talking with some of the parents and community members preparing for this presentation, we found a little few areas around our neighborhood that we wanted to talk about today. I think you skipped one. So Long Pine Lake Drive is the street that the kids were talking about. It is a street that divides the north and south halves of the Lakes of Centerra neighborhood. It's a very wide and curvy road. We have a lot of problems with speeding down that street. And because the road is so wide and curvy, it's really hard for kids to cross it because there's not a crosswalk across that street at all. So cars can be coming around the curve quickly, and kids have a really long space to cover to get across the street safely. So that is one of our main concerns. We would love to see a crosswalk added at the intersection of Pristine and Long Pine Lake Drive, because that's going to get our kids on the right side of the street to get right to High Plains. A flashing sign, even speed bumps, would be wonderful to alert those drivers. Pristine Lake Drive borders the north side of our school property. It's a major artery for anyone coming to and from the north end of our community. And it's also become an unofficial drop-off and pickup zone for our school for any parents that try to avoid going to the other side of the building. And there's actually not a school speed limit sign on this street, so we would love to see a flashing school speed limit sign added. Boyd Lake Avenue borders the west side of our school. It's obviously a very large and busy street. It's the main access point for anyone coming from the north Boyd Lake neighborhoods and anyone coming from the south, like the Edge Apartments. And there's also not a flashing school speed limit sign on this street. And in talking with lots of the parents, there's quite a few access points across Boyd Lake Avenue that don't have safe crossings, even where our school bus picks up some of the kids. So we would love to see some safer crossings added across Boyd Lake. Buffalo Mountain Drive borders the east side of our school, and this is where we have our main entrance. This is where we have a lot of pedestrian access, a lot of vehicle parking for, this is where you access the parking lot, and this is also where we form our car line for pickup and drop off. It's a very busy area with lots of traffic and lots of walkers, and we have a small crosswalk that crosses Buffalo Mountain Drive that is pretty routinely blocked, especially at pickup time. So we would love to see that crosswalk made more visible so that cars don't park in that area, because when kids are entering that intersection and the cars are really close, you really can't see them crossing. And lastly, Lost Creek Drive borders the south side of our school, and this is where we have a lot of access to the southern part of our community, High Plains Village. At this intersection is where the cars are going to travel through to get to our pickup line. This is where we sometimes have a crossing guard, and we have found that a lot of kids tend to cross on that one side of the crosswalk that doesn't actually have crosswalk lines. And we almost think that that intersection would be best served by a four-way stop, or at a minimum, some flashing signs to help out our crossing guard, excuse me. So how can the city of Loveland help? We are really proud of these kindergarten students. They came up with this problem. They have worked really hard to research these ideas and solutions, and this is their third big presentation in front of lots of grownups, and they've done amazing. So at this point, we really would love to have the city's help. They really want to work with you to kind of find some solutions, perhaps participate in a pedestrian safety study around our community to update and even add some safer crossings, because they know that this is going to be a legacy for them to benefit our school and community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done, students. Really good job. I think you'll be hearing from Mark and Nicole in the near future. So thank you. Appreciate you coming and talking to us. Before I move on to procedural information, I want to recognize our city manager. I think we have a few changes to our agenda tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. We have a few modifications to our agenda that we need to inform you of tonight and seek your approval on two of them. The first one is, staff has been notified that they be requested to remove item 7.1, which was the historic designation item. item 7.1, which was the historic designation item. The applicant has requested that be removed for an indefinite time, and we'll, we'll renotice it and bring it back to you at a later date. So that one has been requested to be removed by the applicant. Items 3.5, which is an ordinance on second reading enacting a supplemental, uh, budget appropriation for a purchase of one transit bus, and item 3.6, which is an ordinance amending the Loveland Municipal Code concerning, uh, establishment of electric services. Uh, these items were burst, first held and, uh, done by council on a agenda item of consent. Because they're ordinances, and thanks to the mayor reminding us of this, we have a policy that says that in ordinance, at least one of the readings of the ordinance should be heard during the regular agenda to give the public time to comment on these items. So, uh, what we'd respectfully request, that these two items in a motion, uh, be moved, uh, to the, uh, back of the agenda, and they would be heard where we would normally hear items that are removed from the consent agenda. And that would be staff's recommendation for tonight.
All right, so let me ask council, without objection, we would pull item 7.1 from our agenda, and we would move items 3.5 and 3.6 to the end of the regular agenda. Is there any objection? Seeing none, so be it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And council.
Appreciate it. All right, procedural information. Council may act on behalf of the city, the General Improvement District Number One, the Special Improvement District Number One, or the Loveland Urban Renewal Authority. Items requiring a public hearing or other public participation that remain on the consent agenda are considered to have been opened and closed in the name of the applicable legal entity that is required to take action to approve such items. The information furnished in connection with these items, including any related public comment, is considered as the only evidence presented. Adoption of the items remaining on the consent agenda is considered as adoption of the staff recommendation for those items. Anyone using the meeting ID and link at the front of the agenda during any portion of tonight's meeting must be viewable to city council by using their camera feature during the caller's public comment, and must be a Laramo County resident or an individual who owns property or has a business interest in the city. The caller should choose the raise your hand feature to let the moderator know you wish to speak. Anyone making an in-person comment during any portion of tonight's meeting should come forward to a microphone. Please do not interrupt other speakers. Side conversation should be moved outside the council chambers. Comments will be limited to no more than three minutes. The city clerk will start the timer once an introduction is made, and a buzzer will sound when the three minutes have expired. We do ask that you please identify yourself and your city of residence when giving public comment. So next up on our agenda is public comment. Anyone who wished us to speak to an item which is not on the regular agenda section of the agenda may address the council at this time. Any member of the public may request that an item on the consent agenda labeled as quasi-judicial be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and public comment or testimony. Public comment is intended to provide citizens with an opportunity to address council directly. Generally, council will not respond to public comment other than to seek clarification of the matter raised and defer such matter to the city manager for review and resolution. So at this time, I'll open up public comment to anyone inside chambers. Come on up, and you wanna give us your name and city of residence?
My name is Kent Shove. I'm a resident of Laramo County. To be more exact, I own a commercial building on Fourth Street between Lincoln and Cleveland. I have gotten together with help from others to form a coalition of small business owners and managers requesting the return of events on Fourth Street. It's really that simple. We just wanna voice, and may I approach the bench and give you the documents?
You wanna give that to our city clerk?
In closing, I'm gonna quote John Lennon. "There are no real problems, there are but solutions." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kent.
Mayor, may I clarify?
Um, yes, we have a clarifying question, Kent.
Ken, what, were there specific events you were referring to? Cause we do have events on Fourth Street.
I know. I, uh, have watched it go from greatness to poorness. If you wanted me to talk about specific events, I need to prepare that.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Counselor Ball?
What store are you at? What's your business?
I don't own a store, I own a commercial building, right across the street from Rialto Theater.
Who's in there?
Artisan's Kitchen.
Richard, uh, Counselor Ball, it's my old building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. I go in there, very nice building.
Thank you. Is that it?
Counselor Fogel, your hand is up?
Yes, thank you. Um, just real quick, are you talking about, for instance, the barbecue bands and brews and the corn roast and things like that, or what are we talking about?
You're knocking on the correct door.
Okay. I'm knocking on the correct door. Well, I think the, the, the only thing I wanna bring to your attention, sir, is that those are private events. The corn roast is put on by the Chamber of Commerce. So, uh, along with asking us to consider bringing it back to downtown, um, those private events would be under the control of the Chamber of Commerce for, uh, the corn roast and for barbecue bands and brews, that's under the control of the Saratoga Club. So if you're interested in those two, and I'm just, those two off the top of my head, you need to probably also contact those organizations.
That sounds great. Gotta start somewhere, gotta start gathering information. I want all kinds of events, cause I used to see it. It was great. What's there now?
All right, so city manager, do you have contact information for Mr., for Kent?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do.
Okay. All right, we, we leave it to the city manager to follow up. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Gary Lindquist, Loveland resident from Ward Two. Now soon, the council will discuss the URA contract in Centerra, and I believe it's next study session. I'll offer my comments tonight, since it's not permitted in study session. Now, for more than 20 years, the City of Loveland has provided financial support with the premise that, once the incentive deals expire, the developer slash property owner slash merchant will become a full-fair taxpayer. The first such incentive was for the factory outlet stores. How's that worked out so far? How much did they provide for the city coffers this quarter? One can expect the baby bird oughta be nudged out of the nest by now. A lack of capital has never seemed to be a problem when your valued corporate partners want to acquire hundreds of acres of additional development land. One doesn't have to be Sherlock Holmes to figure out the connection with this item and 7.3, which will be heard tonight. The councilmen who fail to protect the general public's interest in pocketbook will be reminded of this during the reelection campaigns this fall. Attempts for the city hall and the council to be autonomous will certainly have consequences. That's all I gotta say about it.
Thank you, Gary. Is there additional public comment? Any additional public? Okay, three.
Last meeting, I left off asking a question of council about whether the decision had been made yet to bring or to make Loveland a smart city. I want to acknowledge Kevin Furtig, who did a great job in getting me a whole bunch of information, um, basically saying that while the city has every intention of, um, collecting a huge amount of data to help the city run efficiently and smoothly, there are no plans in the works or no formal proclamation to make the city a so-called smart city. I believe Mr. Furtig, and I believe that he really wants what is best and wants Loveland to be a safe city. As I expressed, my concerns about a smart city mainly regard, mainly revolve around this, that data collection tends to go in the direction of not only collecting data from structures and utilities, but eventually proceeds to collect data about citizens themselves, and that is usually accomplished by a mass proliferation of wireless small cells all around, uh, a city. And with that comes surveillance and excessive amounts of wireless radiation. Many of you are probably aware that in China, the whole country and every citizen in the country is tracked by a social credit system, which uses a mass amount, again, of cell, wireless cell towers or small cells to track their citizens and actually assign them a score, a social score. I'm thrilled to see that Loveland has not made the decision to become like that in a so-called smart city, but let's not kid ourselves. What tends to happen when massive amounts of data are collected on things, it eventually evolves into data collection on our citizens and with all of the negatives that I mentioned. And we just don't want that. Uh, as we are moving, also as we are moving down the road now for studying the, um, the effects of cell towers in Loveland and, uh, potentially amending our wireless ordinance, council is eventually gonna have to make the decision of whether we want to have this greater technology in our city at the expense of the health and well-being of our citizens, including our kindergartners all around Loveland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. There additional public comment from inside chambers?
Linda Rosa, Ward Two. I, first of all, I have a question. Uh, the agenda for tonight does not indicate that there will be public comment for any of those items? Could you clarify if that is?
Which, which items?
Uh, none of the items, it says.
Um, on, everything on the, uh, regular agenda, anything that we're gonna act upon will have public comment.
All right, I will wait till then.
Okay. All right, is there any additional public comment from inside chambers? All right, we'll go to Chad for phone-in public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Marsh. Users, if you'd like to speak during public comment, choose the raise your hand feature. Per council's policies, you must have your video on during public comment. As the moderator calls on the user's name, please accept the pop-up request on your screen to become a panelist. The meeting will automatically rejoin you as a panelist, and you may turn on your video, then begin your public comment. Please be ready to accept the pop-up window request from the moderator when called on. User with the name Darren Barrett, please accept the request to become a panelist. Darren Barrett, please turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, city council members, a lifelong resident Darren Barrett here. I gotta say, I really enjoyed the kindergartners, uh, there tonight. What a great way to, uh, to get a firm grasp on, on the budget situation right there. That was really fantastic. Enjoyed the kids, enjoyed the pledge of allegiance. Way to go. So, uh, that, that really, uh, ma- made my evening. Um, listening to, to what they were saying about the situation out at, uh, High Plains or the school out there, uh, I thought I might, uh, tell some of the, the council members and the citizens how things were a long time ago when I was in high school. In fact, there wasn't any, uh, High Plains School wasn't out there. There weren't any houses out there at all. There was, in fact, a large area out there that was a hunting and fishing club. And one day, when I was about 15, I had the opportunity to go out there with some friends of mine. We wanted to take a, a big canoe and a bunch of fishing gear and, and some hunting gear and go out there and spend the day. But we didn't have any canoe, and we didn't have any fishing gear. We did, however, have some .22 rifles, but, uh, I got a firm talking to by my dad at the time, who said I need to be very, very careful because the airport was only about a mile or so away, and the fact that there was an oil well out there. In fact, I think there were two of them out there. So if, uh, anyone out there was involved in the meeting, uh, last night, um, there has always been oil and gas development out there, and the area that I'm speaking of was Equalizer Lake, right next to Boyd. There has always been an oil well out there since I was a kid and long before that. So it doesn't come any surprise to me that they, they wanna do some more oil and well investigating and, uh, drilling out there. In fact, I think that oil well is not too far away from the environmental center that's out there. Somebody out there, even in the schoolyard, could have a capped oil well in their backyard for all I know. So just thought I'd throw that into the mix, cause I'm sure it's gonna come back around. Maybe some other citizens will be speaking about oil and gas development here in Loveland in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Chad, do we have additional phone-in public comment?
Madam Mayor, I do not see any more users with their hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment. We're gonna move on to our cons- ................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... through the process a little bit more quickly without reading every, you know, some of the long introductions that she's read when you get to different items in the agenda. The fifth change is members of the public will be asked to make comments in a manner that promotes civil discourse. And I have that a couple of different times in the new resolution. The sixth point was the portion of the agenda entitled points of personal privilege, which is really where you got to make comments about sort of your philosophy, your things you wanted to bring up. That is being subsumed into new business. So new business and points of personal privilege are now going to be really one item. It's going to be new business, where you'll have the opportunity to also make comments about more general items, and the language there will help guide you. The seventh one is that the public will need to register by electronic or paper form prior to the meeting. Now, I actually say should, because the way I heard it from you last time is that you really want to encourage them, and so there'll be a process where you can do it in person by filling out a card or electronically by noon, the day of the meeting. The first thing the mayor will do is she will read, when she calls for public comment, she'll call from the audience, those who filled out the cards. When she's done with that, she'll go to those who have registered online. That's the first step. Those are the people who get the preference. As you know, you've limited public comment to one hour, so if there continues to be time, then the mayor will go back to those in the audience who wished to make public comment but didn't want to register. And from there, she'll go to those who are online, who would like to make public comment but did not register. So it'll be two rounds, one with a preference given to those who have registered. And now we're down to public comment in study sessions. This was something that was a new idea that was, I think, proposed by Councilmember McFaul to test this out. And so we will have, I'm sorry?
That was the mayor.
The mayor, okay. So we will have public comment, and it will be permitted at study sessions, but there are a couple of conditions. The first one is that the public comment is going to occur at the beginning of the study session, that together, all of the public comment can take no more than 15 minutes, at three minutes per person, and the public comment has to be related to the study session item that you'll be discussing that evening. Those are your primary changes. Now, I told you that sometimes I collect changes that you make over time and add them back into your rules when we have this opportunity to come back and talk to you, and so I've done two of those. The first one is no cellular telephones are permitted at the dais during city council meetings. That was one you passed a while back. And then the next one was new business shall be heard after the public comment and consent agenda portions of the agenda. So those are rules that you had standing for a while, but I now get to incorporate them into the full document. The one rule that we wanted to talk about tonight, and I prepared an option A and an option B. Option A includes all of these that I've just talked to you about. Option B includes all of these that I've just spoken to you about, plus one other that you hadn't quite decided which way to go on. And that is, when you have public comment, will that include resolutions at this point, even if they're included on the regular agenda? There won't be any comment. It's going to be city council only talking about those resolutions. The way I've worded it is, the only time the public will have an opportunity to comment during the regular agenda is on ordinances or resolutions that require a public hearing, for example, metropolitan districts. When those come before the council, and you know there's something, that something's been published ahead of time because there's going to be a public hearing, then those would require it. We would be on the lookout for those for you, so you would know when a resolution is going to require public comment. But for the most part, most of the resolutions you pass do not. So the question tonight is, do you want to go with option A, which is all the rules except this one, or do you want to include this rule that will now require only ordinances or resolutions requiring a public hearing? Allow for public comment during the regular agenda. So those are your rules tonight, and I will hand it back over to the mayor for you to let me know which, you know, if you need something changed, or if you want to talk about something that I might, may have missed.
Well, I think we're going to do questions, and then we'll go to public comment after the motion and stuff. So Counselor Olson, your light is...
Yeah, for the counselors, how many of you have your cellphone on your person?
Mine's under the counter.
Okay. I request that maybe we make some clarification. I think our intent is no cellphone use, texting or voice at the, so right now, it says you can't even have your cell phones. So I'm asking for some, maybe that be revised for clarity purposes.
Okay. How are you going to police?
Well, it's easier, if we say no cellphone use, it should be pretty easy to police, you know, texting or voice. So I think that adds clarity to it, because I think all of us have our phones at the dais, so we're violating our rules.
But would you want to expand that to people using their personal computers to communicate on Facebook or something? Wouldn't that be the same intent, that you're paying attention to what's going on here?
Well, I didn't have that in mind, because I don't do that. Maybe ask the person that does.
All right, so those are questions. Moses, it seems to me that, as I, you know, reflect, in my mind's eye anyway, on past agenda packets, that the majority of what we do is by resolution versus ordinance, ordinance being that there's a penalty. It's typically go to jail, a fine, and things like that. Those are the more severe legislative type of things that we do, whereas resolution is more common to the actions we take. Is that, do you think that's inaccurate?
Madam Mayor, I think that they probably are split around 50/50, but to your point, many of the ordinances are budget appropriations, which don't have a lot of comment associated with them. Many of the things that you do substantively in terms of policy are resolution-related.
Let's see, I'm not sure who was first, Counselor Foley or Counselor Overcash. So one of you have a strong desire to go next?
Real quick, thanks, Counselor Olson, for bringing it up on the cellphone. I use one on the dais for medical accommodations. Don't text during any of that, but it certainly facilitates my ability to hear and what other counselors and citizens are saying. So I would like some type of clarification on that, just to get it taken care of.
Okay. All right, Counselor...
Oh, one other question, I'm sorry. Moses, I think what you meant on registration, online registration would be noon, the fill-out cards would be prior to the beginning of the meeting?
That's correct.
Right, so we're not requiring people to do something in the middle of the day if they're going to be here?
That's correct.
Good. Someone asked me about that, so thank you.
All right, Counselor Foley, this is questions. We're in the questions.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question as to why during that study session, the city manager's request for making sure that we're getting our information in on time was not put into this rules and procedures. Is there a way we can add that in and make sure that that time is consistent with it? That way, the agenda's put out, it's not putting staff under the gun to republish it after council decides at their whim to put stuff in. If you're going to put it in, get it in by that deadline and make that deadline consistent.
Counselmember Foley, you are correct. This was an item that was addressed at the very end of the council meeting. I spoke with the city manager, and the city manager felt it was rushed, and there were additional components that he wanted to talk with you about in terms of consistency. I think that you find that not only is it council new business that has a different date, but it is also public material, as in the material submitted by public, the public who wants to submit, who wants to make comment and have that material as well, they also have a different deadline. So I understand that the reason it was not proposed is at the city manager's direction, he didn't feel like you had the full picture of the changes that would be needed to make everything consistent across your rules.
Okay. City manager, can you elaborate on what you need to make that happen?
Thank you, Counselor Foley. I would need to come back to you. I know it's at the end of the agenda, and we'd already extended your patience a little bit on this discussion. So there is three elements that we need to bring in sync. One is when items are due, when we're trying to get the agenda packet out, and that's been on Thursday. When we receive information from you to put items, new items, on the agenda, which is on Friday by 5:00, and when citizens can provide new information, which is also there. All those dates, in order to want to increase the transparency, we want to publish the packet with that information in it. So what I need to do is bring to you a couple of options of when either we move the publishing date into Friday, or we say we move up the dates for the deadlines for submitting information to the packet. I wasn't prepared to do that tonight, but that's an item that will help us so we don't have to keep republishing the agenda, and we do that at least twice a month.
So is it as simple as everything needs to be in by noon Thursday, and the packet can be published by Friday at noon, or by end of business on noon, or, I'm sorry, the end of business Friday?
Yeah, we would publish around 3:00 on Thursday. So if everything was in by noon, including any information from council on new agenda items and public information that they want to send, that they want to make sure is included in the packet, like public comments on agenda items or something.
By Friday or Thursday?
By Thursday, at noon.
Friday won't work.
No, because then we publish the packet Thursday at 3:00, so we have to republish. Well, we're getting, I'm, yeah, we're closer on the 3:00 than we are the next day. So, and that's why I think it's something that needs a little bit of discussion, because I think council needs to talk about when, do they want to move up? Do they want to get the packet on Wednesday? Do they want to, is this coming on Thursday at 3-ish, or sometime late in the afternoon before 5:00, and sometimes a little bit later, okay? Or do they want to wait and get it on Friday? Because we used to publish on Friday, so that's where we need to have discussions, I think.
Okay.
All right, Counselor Fogel.
Just a side comment real quick, Steve. On the publication dates, I don't think it matters what, you know, make it good for your staff, make it workable for your staff, but I think consistency is the key. Whatever the time is, it needs to be absolute. And if somebody misses the deadline, they miss the deadline, and they can come back the following week or the following two weeks. Because we've, you know, we've had more excuses as to why we're bumping things than we have actuals closed deadlines, and I think it's important that we have consistency, not only for your staff, but for council. Quick question, Moses. When you're looking at, you've got a line in your text there that says, the public should register by electronic or paper form prior to the meeting. You mean everybody that's going to attend should register?
Counselmember, this, I do not mean everyone. It really means for those who want preference to speak, because they will speak first.
For people interested in participating in public comment.
That's correct. They will, those who register will speak first, and those who do not register will be caught in the second round.
That line needs to reflect that, because if read from a layman's person that hasn't seen this before, it looks like everybody's supposed to register that wants to come. So just a comment there. The next comment is, is that, you know, after doing a few Zoom meetings, I think Counselor Sampson will probably agree, the audio is much better than it used to be, but I can definitely sympathize with Counselor Overcash's dilemma, because hearing aids are not a lot of fun to start with. And modern hearing aids are all controlled from your cellphone. There's no buttons on the sides, nothing else. The electronics is amazing, but he does need the ability, and any counselors in the future that would need the same ability, to be able to use their cellphone at the dais for auditory control of their hearing aids. And under no circumstances do we want texting or anything like that going on, but I think we need to put some kind of a provision in for an ADA accommodation for people with hearing aids.
So these are questions. Counselor Olson?
Yeah, Moses, just for clarification purposes, I may have heard differently last week, but as far as resolutions goes, my understanding was that there's probably more of our regular agenda items that have resolutions than ordinances, and there tends to be less interest in those resolutions than the ordinances. Did I misunderstand, or is that correct?
Counselmember, I'm not sure that I would characterize it that way. I think that resolutions tend to have a lot of policy related to them. Ordinances, for the most part, a lot of them tend to be either, you know, changes to the code or supplemental budget appropriations.
With the, well, I guess with the resolutions, that would allow the public to speak to the items earlier rather than later, they wouldn't have to wait around for the individual items. So, okay, thanks.
All right. So Moses, if some, if one of us had something new to suggest, you're saying wait until after public comment and whatnot, right? Until the motion is read, we take public comment. You don't want those new suggestions now, or do you? Because this is the question period.
So, Madam Mayor, my preference would be that, you know, after you've read the motion to adopt it, if there are changes you want, and the one I do hear is that there would be no cellphone use at, no cellphone use at the dais other than for medical accommodations. That's really the big change I heard. If you have larger changes that you want to make outside of these, then I would say that you pass this resolution after public comment and, you know, discussion, if this is what you believe your rules reflect, and then talk about the new ones that you want, and I'll make that an addendum.
All right, Counselor Sampson?
Thank you. I thought this was just questions, too, but I guess if we're going to talk about medical accommodation as far as cell phones are considered, are we using that as a blanket term? Or are we specifying, as Counselor Fogel did, only people who have hearing aids?
I am keeping it general, because this is for the benefit of council.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Oh, and I just think, as far as general is concerned, anything that would be ADA-related would apply, is that right, for an individual?
Where are you going, Counselor Sampson? Can you fill us in?
Yeah, I have a daughter who has significant medical needs, and not having my cellphone at the dais has been something that has caused me to miss portions of the meeting, because I have had to get up to check a message that said something along the lines of, you know, just something not super specific. I could respond with a yes or no if needed, but it was time-sensitive. There are, you know, there have been emergencies that I needed to respond to, but I didn't see the message straightaway. I mean, it's very important, if you are caring for, you're the caregiver of an individual with medical needs, that you are accessible. And if there was someone else I could, you know, pass that baton to, you know, probably would have done it. But the truth is, I love being her mom, I love being her caregiver, and I need to be accessible for her. And to me, that falls within our ADA guidelines, if you're a caregiver, for someone who requires ADA accommodation. So that's what I just wanted to clarify.
I had cellphone-using, adjusting electronic equipment in mind when I brought this up.
Well, that's fine. That can be one of them. But I don't think it's fair that you would offer an accommodation to one member of council and not another.
I'm just trying to save the city a few thousand dollars.
A few thousand dollars, how, Counselor Fogel?
Because if we ask, if we ask the city to provide hearing-enhanced mechanisms at the dais for counselors that have hearing impairment, trust me, it'll be a few thousand, if not 10,000 or 20,000.
I'm not, I totally support that. I'm not taking that away. What I'm saying is that we don't get to cherry pick what an ADA accommodation is. That's what I'm saying.
Well, maybe we use the ADA accommodation wording correctly, and I withdraw that.
Oh, so you want only individuals who have hearing aids to have...
We want to accommodate the fact that we have a very poor audio system in our chambers, okay? The unfortunate part of it is, we as counselors also don't practice good microphone etiquette. So sometimes you can hear one person, you can't hear the other person, et cetera. And we need to accommodate counselors with hearing disabilities at the dais. If we want to do it with equipment, that's fine, too. I don't mind. But we got rid of...
All I'm saying is that we're going to consider a medical accommodation for one individual on council and future councils. I think we need to be open to the fact that there are additional accommodations that would need to be met for other individuals. Even the fact that someone might need to get up and walk around in the middle of the meeting. Right now, we don't have regulation about that, because the people that get up and walk around aren't someone that the majority doesn't have a problem with. But I think if the mayor and I got up and walked around, there's a good possibility that there would be a rule against how disruptive it is that we get up and walk around, even if it prevents blood clots or whatever the issue is. I don't think that our medical care or our dependent care should even be mentioned in this. If I am not adult enough to respond to text messages in a quiet manner, in a, you know, a discreet manner, when I have something going on with my child, then that's on me. And like you've always said, as far as term limits are concerned, people can read, you know, not elect me if I decide to run again. If they don't like that I have my cellphone at the dais, I don't think, as an adult, it is anyone else's, it's within anyone else's, should be within their authority to tell me that I can't respond to my daughter's caregiver when I'm away from my house. So I won't support that. I certainly would support accommodations. It's disappointing to me that you would think that one person's accommodation would be greater than another person's need for an accommodation. But that's my point on that. And if we don't, I won't support any of these without something about that.
Okay, so Moses, when you're talking accommodations, you're leaving it more open, correct?
I am, Madam Mayor. I understand... I am, Madam Mayor. I, I understand that council, you know, as you saw, many raised their hands saying that they do have the phone, and they recognize that the purpose is really not to interfere with the, the business of council.
Okay.
I think, I think, aren't we adults? Can't we use some reason? I mean, if, if a message comes up from my wife that the basement's flooded, I might want to know that. So I think reasonable accommodations, certainly ADA, you know, accommodations certainly reasonable. But I think, let's be adult, you know, use our discretion.
I think, yeah, I think that was Moses's intent. So since we're talking about accommodations for council, also accommodations for the public, who might be trying to address council, correct?
Madam Mayor, this one is focused just at cellphones by, held by council members.
But in terms of our rules of procedure, we are, we have language in here for accommodating people to attend our meetings, other than just in person, right?
Madam Mayor, the accommodation that the city currently provides, as we allow Zoom with video?
Okay, so this is my, this is my question. So last week, I attended the Office on Aging meeting, and Jeff Pomeranka for Meals on Wheels was making a presentation to that board, board group, and also Volunteers of America, and both were talking about food for people that are essentially homebound, mobility issues. And so I took the opportunity to say, you know, council is discussing public comment. What percentage of your clients would be able to attend our council meeting if they had to have a virtual ability to have their photos, you know, their image seen? Jeff Pomeranka with Meals on Wheels said, definitely not more than 50% of the people. So he has approximately 700 clients. So 350 of his clients would not be able to attend our meeting from home and their elderly, typically elderly with mobility issues. He said he did a survey recently, mailed out a survey, 700 mail, you know, mail items went out, only five people responded online. Everybody else that responded did it with paper. So I think having accommodations, you know, needs to be a little bit more open, then. So, I don't know how you write that into what you're doing.
Well, Madam Mayor, are there other people with lights on, sorry?
Yes, I have. Counselor McFaul?
Yeah, I would sit down, Moses, and, and basically say that as far as the, the accommodation itself, if, if we limit it to just devices, every time we run into accommodation, we're going to have to change the rules. So making it broad enough for ADA itself, and I think what Counselor Olson said, we're adults. Trust everybody to do the right thing. And it's up to, it's up to us to sit down and, and put an aspect in there, if there's an abuse to the rules, what to do. But I, I, one, I empathize with, with Counselor Sampson on what she said, and I think she's got a very good point in that aspect, that if we're going to make an accommodation for ADA, we should make accommodation for ADA.
All right, Counselor Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Counselor McFaul. I did, I wanted to just respond, Madam Mayor, to what you had said about the accommodations. I seem to remember last week, Counselor McFaul suggested that those who need an accommodation to provide public comment, maybe they would be able to contact the clerk's office or someone at the city to receive that accommodation so that they could participate. And I think that was kind of a way of saying we could still move forward with these rules, but we would give people an option for any necessary accommodation. And I don't know if that's feasible. I don't know how the city clerk would necessarily say like, no, you can't have an accommodation. I think if someone requests, they kind of get it. But I think having that avenue was important. And Counselor McFaul, that was something I think you mentioned, if I can remember, if I remember correctly. I'd like to see that put in here, if so.
So I, I think we're all saying the same thing here.
So, Madam Mayor, I, I guess I want to be clear. You know, the rules that I've put in place, they are your rules based on what you provided last time. I do hear you want some changes. Certainly, you're changing from no cellphones at the dais to no cellphone use at the dais other than for reasonable accommodation, where you make that, you know, council makes that determination individually. In terms of other accommodations for public comment, there was not general consensus to change from the format that we're currently using, which is to allow in-person and remote comment with video.
Okay. I'm not sure how that works legally for free speech.
I want to, Madam Mayor.
I have my hand up.
Okay, Counselor Mala, we have not heard from, so Counselor Mala.
We're way past questions.
Well, we're supposed to still be asking questions.
Then I'll, then I'll wait for comments then. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Counselor Fogel?
Madam Mayor, my question really is for Moses and Delinn, and that is, without the video component of Zoom, how do we verify who's who? And everybody goes, oh, well, we all know who everybody is. Well, that wasn't the case a year and a half ago, when we were having people call in from Chicago screaming at us with pseudonyms. Okay? We still have people come to council and want to introduce themselves as cartoon characters. Why, I, I think we need some way to verify who's who, and to verify that they're actually who they say they are, and most importantly, verify that they live within our area of responsibility, which we have agreed is important to limit, so that we don't have people calling in and screaming at our mayor anymore. So if there's a way to accommodate, you know, some visual way or some physical way to verify who people are, I don't have any problems with getting rid of video. But I think it's the easiest and cleanest way to verify who's who.
So I guess the question is, would you have a way, I, I don't know that you have a way with somebody's image there either, but do you have, how do you affirm that somebody's identity is the one they give you? I mean, that's the overall question, I guess.
Madam Mayor, it's very simple. This is a recorded meeting. So if somebody calls in and disrupts this meeting, the police, the police can go back and look at it for us and tell us who's who, and if they were incorrect in what they were saying, or, more importantly, if they're disrupting the meeting intentionally, like was happening a couple of years ago, or as late as a year ago, it allowed, it, it's straightened, you know, by doing the video, I think that's straightened that whole thing up. Just my, just my opinion.
So, the question is, how do you verify?
Is that the question?
I, I think, you know, is there a means? I think that's what he's asking, is there a means to verify? And no matter what format, somebody would virtually attend, whether it's a phone or whatever.
Madam Mayor, I don't have, I don't know, I don't know an answer to that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Foley, did you have?
Which motion should I read?
Okay, so we need to get a flavor from the council, because we have two motions. Motion A, which was all of those changes listed without eliminating public comment on resolutions. And then B is eliminating resolution, public comment.
Clarification, Mayor, it doesn't eliminate it, it just moves it to public comment up front.
Well, it doesn't come at the time that we're taking action on the item.
Yeah, but there's, it gives the public an earlier opportunity. So I, I request option B.
I do too. I support B.
So, I, I do not support B. Don't support A either, but I don't support B. Thumbs up, thumbs down on, on A. You're going to do one. It's... Is anybody else? I can't see.
Counselor Sampson also voted for A.
Okay, so we have three As. Counselor McFaul, I couldn't see what you were doing. Thumbs down. Okay, so I, it appears the council favors option B, so we will go ahead and read the motion, and then we'll open up public comment.
A motion to adopt Resolution R-122023B approving rules and procedures for City Council of the City of Loveland, Colorado.
Second.
All right, I will open up public comment for people inside chambers.
George Garklives Loveland, Colorado. Two comments. The first one addressing Councilman Fogel's idea that we need to be able to verify who is talking. I think that is an unworkable suggestion. You can very much have somebody walk in here who has never made a public comment before, who lives within the city, and they're not asked to provide a birth certificate or a passport or anything. And you will accept what they have to say, because you can see their face. You know, to make that restriction then for video conferencing is silly in my regard, because you've got two different rules. You know, you're not asking for my identification when I speak here. Why do you want to do that or purport to do that when somebody's on a video call? It's unenforceable. It doesn't make sense. While I do support and wholeheartedly support civil discourse, it's one of those meaningless things. It's like supporting motherhood, apple pie, and a flag. Unless you have a person who is, got a set of rules that decides what is civil and what is not, and then compares that to what is allowed by the First Amendment, you're walking on thin ice. You know, it's a nice thing to say, I'm an absolute supporter of civil discourse, but why do you put that in there if you can't enforce it? I think Counselor McFaul has says, why can't we be adults? I think there's also, you already have an, an opportunity to have somebody, you know, hit the gavel and say, we're stopping the meeting if things get out of hand. But beyond that, how are you going to enforce or define what civil discourse is? And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
George, just for clarif, just for me, I've been so curious about this. Will you please pronounce your last name again?
Garklives.
Garf, Gark?
Garklives.
Garklives.
Yes.
Got you. Thank you.
That's as, that's as close as you can get.
And that's as close as I'll probably ever get to. It's, it's okay with Garklives, Garklives.
And that's okay.
And I'm with it. But I've been so curious about that, so thank you.
You know what? I am too. Thank you.
I just put down George G. when he comes up. Counselor Overcash, your ladies on, did you have a clarifying question for George?
No, I was, no.
Okay, all right.
I was just waiting for comments. I just looked it up.
Okay. Any additional public comment from inside chambers?
Good evening, Linda Rosa from Ward Two. It was a silly and clownish performance that counselors gave us at the last council meeting on the pretense of devising ways to finish agendas. Are we citizens to believe that one counselor really thinks that roll call is a colossal waste of time, or that our Republican counselors think it's a good idea to increase City Hall's bureaucracy with a sign-up system so pointless that the existing sign-up system has been ignored by both citizens and city staff for over a year? All this loquacious nitpicking is just smoke and mirrors for the more serious crime being hatched, to wit, your option B, the little discussed banning of citizens from speaking during the regular agenda on resolutions and after their, and after hearing council's questions, as if resolutions were a minor sort of council action. Notably, no councils before you have used city charter to unjustly restrict citizens from being a part of the resolution process, because they knew full well that resolutions can be every bit as consequential to the community as an ordinance. So why rush this repair of the agenda? Why distance citizens from the resolution process? Why Counselors Foley's insistence on getting this done quickly, done and over? Curiously, today I noted that the agenda for tomorrow's school board includes picking the representative for a URA that hasn't been created yet by council. Creation of the URA will be coming to council on February 7. And I will bet the farm that this URA will be created at that time by a quick resolution, setting up the South Interurban Renewal Authority for 25 years with board members already in place, ready to go. This rush deal gives citizens little time to know what's happening, to learn all the ways that this URA with its high-density housing will impact the community for the next 25 years into the future. And thanks to council, citizens may be restricted from speaking to momentous resolutions like this at the time they are being deliberated. I urge you not to pass any of these changes to the agenda, especially option B, affecting citizens' ability to effectively play a part in discussions about resolutions.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Catherine Bullard, Ward Two. I would, in a friendly manner, disagree with my good friend George Garklis about the civic, keeping things in a civic way, because I think just having it there is helpful. But I'm presuming that we are also talking about the items under A. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The very last one, I think is just, and I'm not seeing it quite as well right now, but the, the very last one, public comment is permitted at City Council study sessions. My understanding was that at, as each, as each item was being discussed, then that was when public comment was, not at the beginning of the, of the meeting. Am I correct? Because it doesn't seem like that.
And that's not the way that it was sent to Moses to, to write up. It's one public comment for 15 minutes maximum on everything on the study session.
And that, that kind of doesn't make sense to me. I would think that having, having public comment at each of those items would be much more helpful, and it would clear things up as we move from item one to item three, et cetera. That's it.
All right. Additional public comment from inside chambers? All right, seeing none. Chad, we'll go to phone in public comment on item 7.3.
Thank you, Mayor Marsh. Users, if you'd like to speak to this item, please choose the raise your hand feature. User with the name Lori G., please accept the request to become a panelist. Lori G., turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Are we having a connection problem? Chad, do we have, oh, okay. Now we can see you, Lori. You look like you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. My apologies for the delay on that. So, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilors. Just a very quick comment regarding this item. And regards to phone comment, I cannot see my own screen, so I apologize for that, since you're not getting, hopefully that's a little bit better. In regards to people with, that are homebound or have physical limitations, what they do at the school board meetings is that they give people an opportunity to call in and literally leave a message that can be then played at, at the meeting. I think this would be a good option to possibly explore, maybe in the future. But for them to be able to identify themselves, this would give a chance for them to verify, if need be, that the person is an actual resident and can speak to an issue that is being presented. So that's just an option for maybe future, future consideration. And I just wanted to commend the kindergartners that came to council tonight, that they identified a problem, but then they offered a s- a problem, but then they offered a solution. And I think that's the point that was being made with the civil discourse, that if there is a problem, if we can offer a solution or identify the problem in a very civil manner so that something can be addressed down the road and a solution found maybe with a meeting of minds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lori. Do we have additional phone in public comment, Chad?
User with the name Bob Masaro, please accept the request to become a panelist. Bob Masaro, please turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, and we can see you.
Great. First, let me thank everyone for what you did last week by keeping public comment in this current location on the agenda. I think that was a good move. And also adding public comment to the study sessions, that was also a very good move. However, I do have an issue. And this whole thing about the agenda kind of struck me because I used to be a business process analyst over 30 years ago when this whole concept was coming into being on how to actually do it. And one of the first things you do in good business process modeling is you have to determine if the process has any value. And if you can't define clearly what that process value is added to the corporation where I used to work, then a process has got to be eliminated. I challenge you tonight to determine what the actual value of registering people either manually at the meeting or electronically through video helps you solve the problem of getting things done on time. I, for one, cannot make that link, and I'd like to see somebody make the link specifically of how registration saves you time. When you look at all of the meetings, and I've gone back and reviewed a few of them, the main problem here is, and it's right in your agenda, right in your new rules, council gets five minutes twice to discuss the issues. That's an hour and a half per issues if you have nine members taking their full 10 minutes. That's where the problem is. As I said in previous public comment, it's you staying on schedule is the problem. It has nothing to do with public comment or anything else. I would recommend that you give a buzzer to the city clerk, and she says the five minutes, and it's over. And if you want to extend, then you have to take a vote to extend that because you're going to be bumping something else further down the agenda. That's where the problem is, and other people have stated the same thing. So my real issue is, why in the world are we having anybody register when in the past, as was just stated, no one was following it to begin with? And the time between people coming up to their podium is probably 10 seconds because I've timed some of that also. That's not going to change anything by having people have to follow after the mayor reads their name. And the last thing, this is councillor Foley, I had to go buy a camera because my computer died, or my camera on my computer died, in order for me to be here tonight. And besides knowing me, how in the world is you seeing me on this camera help you identify who I am unless you're using facial recognition, which I don't think we're doing yet? So anyway, that's my public comment. Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Chad, do we have additional phone in public comment?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any more users with their hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment. And Moses, I have a question. You know, we have a number of things coming up over the next couple of weeks, next week at a study session, and then February 7th, talking about seating a new URA Board, a Loveland Urban Renewal Authority Board, and then amendments to the Master Finance Agreement, additional incentives. There's a ton of stuff coming before us, all before about March 21st. How many of those items are going to be resolutions and how many are going to be ordinances?
Madam Mayor, I expect most of them will be resolutions.
Most will be resolutions.
The overwhelming majority will be resolutions.
Okay. So I like Darren Barrett. Find this very interesting coincidence that we've had public comment for years, and all of a sudden, public comment is a problem. I used to be in the back of the room, and I would come up and make public comment. We had no one-hour time limit. I, as an individual, could ask four people to give their time, and I could speak for 10 minutes on a topic. I was allowed to speak to every item on the regular agenda. It was never a problem. Now we have a whole lot of very interesting items coming up to council. We had a consultant, what I would call a lobbyist, who was obviously being paid to advocate that public comment is suddenly a problem. I find that coincidence very concerning. I don't find public comment to be a concern. And I agree with Bob Masaro. The problem in terms of going over is council discussion. And I think Linda Rosa sent us an email listing how much time each councillor spent at the last meeting on this item, you know, public comment, rules of procedure. We have one councillor 22 minutes, one at 20, one at 15, one at 12 and a half, one at 10 and a half, one at 7. I mean, this is what's taking up the time, not the public. That is my opinion regarding study sessions. I'm very happy that we're talking about having public comment at study sessions because that's when we're discussing things for the first time. However, I believe it should be on each item, not at the beginning. The public needs to hear the presentation before they know what they may want to comment on. It's not until they see what we see and ask the questions by council that they might be educated with some new information and want to give public comment. Again, I don't agree with having to have a camera vision. Let's see, what else were my comments here? Don't agree with the hour limit upfront. I think those are my major comments. I'm not saying... Okay, I'm not sure who was next. I've got three people, councillor Olson, councillor McFaul, and councillor Ball. And councillor Sampson. Let's start with councillor Ball.
With regard to the study sessions, I agree with the mayor. It makes no sense to have the comment, all comments made before the whole thing starts. They should be made after the presentation because you don't know what the heck they're going to be presenting. And oftentimes, the presenters clarify, and there won't be a need for questions. So I agree with the mayor on that.
Thank you. Councillor McFaul.
So, since I started this whole fiasco, I guess I'll speak to this part of it. And again, I'm going to say it was never about public comment. I think it came clear. I mean, it was about a discussion about how we get our agenda straightened out. That's what it was all about. And I find that I tend to concur that it's us that are the biggest problems on this. And I know we've brought up, you know, freedom of speech and everything else, and it was an interesting email that we received in our council email boxes today from John Zachem from Jackson Kelly Law Firm, basically saying that, you know, public comment in a limited forum like this is not a limitation of free speech. And I'll be interested to really dig through that and take a look at it. But I'll say this, and this may surprise some people out here, but I don't support either one of the options. And I'm not going to vote for this option. I will vote against it, only for this fact that I think some of the things in there are good. I think there are things that we need to do, but I think we're the problem, cut and dried. And I don't think anything we do in either one of these options is going to fix that problem until we look at it ourselves and figure out what's going on. So I don't support either option A or option B.
Thank you. Councillor Olson.
It should be an interesting vote then. Well, responding to Mr. Masaro, first off, I think there is value in registering people. And my view would have been for Delin to get the cards and to call the people up to the podium so that we could expedite the process instead of waiting to see if somebody has the determination to stand up. It allows us to kind of get an idea of the extent of public comment and maybe budget our time. But also, it allows us then to have, a lot of the people that come in here, they give their name, and I don't know exactly, it's a little garbled, so I'm not sure what their name is. So we have, I can find out from the cards who the individuals are. And in some instances, we want to reach out to those individuals because they have a question that would like to be addressed, and this gives us a contact means to reach out those people. So I think there is particular value on that. My interest in having, you know, moving public comment on the resolutions was, my thought was that, and maybe I'm wrong, but that would give the public an opportunity to speak to items on the agenda rather than sitting around to 10:30 at night for commenting on the last item. So anyway, that was the reason for that. I appreciate the concerns that some of the others had. I don't support the idea, well, first off, on the study sessions, my feeling is, let's try it. We've not had public comment at study sessions before. This can be a first step to try it out and see what kind of interest there is. If it doesn't work, we can change it. So that's, it's a start, I think, in giving, I think what we did last time is we opened up the door for more public comment rather than restricting public comment. So I still feel that's the direction we've gone, and so I support B for that reason.
All right, thank you. Councillor Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And all of council, I think we've had some good points brought forward. So based on kind of where we're at, I certainly am glad we're going to do public comment at the study sessions. I'd like to see it actually after the presentations as well, the way that councillor Ball and Mayor Marsh and councillor McFaul all said as well. So, you know, I think it's important that we have it at our study session because part of studying an item would be studying our public's perception of it, and it also gives another opportunity for our public to be engaged and informed in the things that we're going to be voting on down the pike. So I like that. And I don't know, maybe this is just a quick question for Moses, if I could. Moses, would we be able to make an amendment to this? You wanted us to wait on everything, vote this in, and then you'd come back. Is that right?
Go ahead.
Councillor Member Sampson, I would prefer that the only amendment be made to the phone at some point before you take your vote. And otherwise, if you want to make other changes, I would encourage you to either have a study session or at one of your council meetings, if you are ready to raise that issue, then we can just have that as an addendum to your rules.
Okay. But if we're already amending the phone, could we also just amend it, like, make an amendment that study session public comment would be permitted after an item's presentation for the 15-minute window or whatever?
Councillor Member Sampson, that amendment is small enough that that would not disrupt the resolution if you wanted to do that.
Okay, all right. So then, if I could, I'd like to propose an amendment. I move to amend the option B to include ADA accommodations for cellphone use at the dais, that cellphones would be permitted at the dais but only used for ADA or accommodation emergency-type situations, and that we also would allow for public comment at study sessions after each item's presentation, limiting the public comment to 15 minutes per item.
Second.
All right, discussion on the amendment. All right, saying none. Roll call on the amendment. Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Fogel?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Mallow?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was eight to one. The motion for the amendment passes, so now we're back to the main. Let's see. You finished?
Do I still have the floor, Mayor?
Yes, you do.
Okay, excellent. And I'll keep it quick. I wasn't going to support this item either, but now that we've made these modifications, I think it's a great place for us to start moving forward from. I didn't think about the public comment, as you had mentioned, Mayor Marsh, about the items, the hot items that are coming forward. And I would like to keep the public comment, you know, for each item. And so I understand the importance of that, and I agree to that, but I think that's a modification that can be made moving forward if necessary, or so we decide. And other than that, oh, and I was just going to say with councillor Olson, I agree. I also supported having people speak at the beginning of the meeting to an item that was on the agenda, because I like that idea, too, that people could get out of here sometimes. I mean, look, tonight, you know, it's 8 o'clock, but sometimes it's 10 o'clock before we get to something. Someone's been waiting all night. So I agree with you on that. I wish we could find a way to kind of split the baby on that, but maybe that's something down the road as well. So that's all. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Councillor Mallow.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. One of my items was just taken care of, which is fantastic. The other part about the, is the public comment after the resolutions. I think that's important to give the public a chance to comment after the presentation. Actually, that's for the study session, but after the resolutions, I think they should be allowed. Thank you.
So you're saying option A?
Yep.
But we're doing option B. Okay, councillor Foley.
You want me to reread the motion?
No, you have your light on. I assume you have questions or comments.
Not at this time.
Okay, councillor Overcash.
I appreciate the amendment on reasonable accommodations, so thank you for making that amendment. I am glad that we are adding opportunity for a public comment in a study session, and I concur with that after the item makes more sense. We usually only have one or two items on a study session, a couple items maybe. So I think that's timely, and it's not really an inconvenience in any way. And I'm glad we're actually giving citizens an opportunity, as mentioned earlier, and B, to comment earlier in the meeting on resolutions rather than having to wait until we finally get around to new business. So I think it's more convenient for citizens earlier in the evening than waiting till the end. So thank you very much for the amendment. Appreciate it.
All right, councillor Olson.
I'm waiting to vote, ma'am.
Okay. And again, I do not support B. I believe public needs to comment on each resolution. You know, I believe we do the majority of our business by resolution. So let's have you read the motion as amended.
A motion to adopt resolution R-122023B approving rules of procedure for the city council of the City of Loveland, Colorado.
Okay, roll call, please, as amended.
As amended.
As amended. Roll call, please. Foley?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Fogel?
Yes.
McFaul?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Mallow?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was five to four. All right, the motion passes as option B. It is now almost 8 o'clock. Let's take a break till 8:10. We stand in recess, and we'll be hearing items 3.5 and 3.6 after recess.